We can start the meeting. The first matter on the agenda is the public hearing for consideration of an application for site plan approval at Zero Brook Street. The application has been submitted by Brook Street Phase Three Solar LLC pursuant to the Plimpton zoning bylaw section 300-610 for the construction of a large-scale 17.91-acre ground-mounted photovoltaic array on property located at Zero Brook Street. Assessors map block lot numbers 18-6-43, 18-6-43A, 18-6-44, and 19-1-6. Mr. Cohen is recusing himself from participation in this matter. We will start by hearing a presentation from the applicant's representative. If you could just identify yourself for the record.
Good evening. Zachary Parkus, rewilded intervals for Brook Street Phase Three Solar. Here as the chair introduced to discuss with you guys our site plan review application for a solar project located off Brook Street. Property is a 103-acre property owned by the Vopat family. Vopats have lived on-site here for a little bit over 55 years. Neil, as you guys probably know through his different service with the town, was a member of the CBA and the town council during different times, over the town council for the town of Plimpton, at different various periods during the 55 years that he's lived in town. The property can be thought of, from my perspective, in three parts. We'll call it traditionally before any solar was developed on the site. Property is shown right here. This is a pull from the satellite image exhibits that I provided you guys in exhibit E of the application package, date 2005, before any solar project went on, solar projects happened on this site or on the neighboring site, Mr. Norrie's site at Plimpton Sand and Gravel. As I said, 102-acre site, about 10 acres to the northern area, was utilized for the residence and dog kennel. About 50 acres in the center has been utilized traditionally for a Christmas tree farm, and then the remaining acreage was undeveloped forest land that surrounded remaining three sides of the site, made up of about 40 total acres. So as I'm going to flip through, not all the images, but just to show a little bit of development on the property and the surrounding properties. In 2014, we see this first solar project get built in the area. This is the project on Plimpton Sand and Gravel property. I flip to the next. Please note the date in the top left-hand corner. What we're calling Phase One was developed by me with Mr. Vopat in 2016, constructed late 2016, 2017. 25-acre project approximately. Phase Two developed a couple of years later, permitted in 2019, built in 2020. I only get certain satellite images as I click back through time, but here's this Phase Two project right here. You can see a little bit of that undisturbed area, but kind of first starting to take a bite out of that traditional Christmas tree farm area. And then I move to present to show you guys Phase One, Phase Two, and then the red line is the approximate fence line of the proposed Phase Three that we're discussing. I provide this information, you have it, just for general context of what's gone on in this property over the last 10 years, after about 40-plus years of, like I said, the traditional uses. Adding solar now to those three mixes, we've got the residence that stays the same at about 10 acres. You've got the Christmas tree farm, the remaining area in here, has been reduced to about 15 acres as Neil's just gotten older, spent less time on that farm. More of it has gone to the solar development areas, but also they've let some areas grow in very, very thick. They've just left this for over 20 years, and you see that natural growth. And then remaining undeveloped woodland in the area here, here, and around the southern area totals approximately 26 acres. So we've got 10 acres of residence, 15 acres of remaining Christmas tree farm, and about 50, five, zero, acres of solar total across the three projects.
I'm sorry, what did you say the remaining undeveloped woodland was in acreage?
26 would be remaining should this project move forward. This Phase Three that's proposed in front of you now, represented by the red outline, is the final solar development that'll happen on this property for two reasons. Number one, because that's the wish of the Vopats, but also number two, Brook Street substation, which is up here just off the map, is at what we call electrical capacity. Development of like mine or like I do is based on matching local demand for electricity with local generation via solar projects. Substations are built traditionally to pull power off the transmission lines right from traditional big nuclear gas and coal and pull down. So there's a capacity of how much power can come down through those substations. So similarly, there's the exact same amount of capacity that can go up through them. Okay? So there's been a bunch of solar developed in Kingston, in Plimpton, et cetera. The majority of it runs back to this Brook Street substation. We've now reached what we call electrical capacity at the site. The substation operates safely, but I think it's just important for your kind of bigger planning purposes to understand that we've reached the saturation factor that we've been shooting for with the goal of providing local electricity through local generation. Turning to specifically this Phase Three project for which you have the site plan review application in front of you. 18 acres is one way to look at it. That's the total impacted area. It could be a little bit closer to 20 if you include the access road via Plimpton Sand and Gravel and the access road up to Brook Street, but 18 is the right number formally. The actual fence line is closer to 15 acres. Once everything has been disturbed and graded out, 15 acres will be the solar project. That extra three acres, that's the balance, or five if you include the roads, is simply that ancillary development area that has to get impacted for a project. The 15-acre fenced area will house a 5-megawatt AC solar project with energy storage, battery energy storage. All projects in Massachusetts have had batteries since approximately 2019. This Norrie project, this Phase One of the Vopat project were built prior to battery energy storage being required by the Commonwealth. Phase Two houses a lithium ion battery as is required by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Phase Two is going to be very similar, I should say Phase Three will be very similar to how Phase Two was built. It's being entered in the exact same solar program that Phase Two was introduced in. As I said, access will be through the Plimpton Sand and Gravel, existing paved access that moves to a very compacted dirt road to get all the way to the site. That'll be used for construction, for operations and maintenance through an existing agreement with Plimpton Sand and Gravel. We also have an emergency access route up to the north through the Vopat property directly to Brook Street as is required. An existing woods road that serves as emergency access for Phase One, Phase Two, as you can see by this little flagpole here, will tie in for Phase Three. So all three projects will utilize this similar emergency access route. Interconnection finally is proposed in the southwest, excuse me, southeast corner in this transmission right-of-way. Transmission right-of-way currently houses the interconnection for Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three at separate intervals. This corridor houses transmission lines as well as distribution lines that run north to the Brook Street substation. We started development on this project, this Phase Three, kind of conversations with the Vopat family in March of 2023, but ultimately have delayed considerably as we understood the interconnection, Eversource's timeline to complete infrastructure upgrades to Plymouth County. Ultimately, the projects ahead of it were approved in April of 2022. It took two years for the Department of Public Utilities to approve those upgrades, so 2024, and Eversource has four years to complete all of their electrical upgrades that'll allow for this project to interconnect. So that means not till 2028 will this new project turn on. So that's why we sat around for the last two or three years doing very little, but now that we're starting to see a construction schedule in 2027, we do permitting about a year and a half ahead of that construction schedule so that we can line up our final designs, our components, et cetera, very long lead time equipment. We started kind of formal development or public development, I'd say, with the town, the state level and federal agencies that needed, but the most applicable to this conversation with Conservation Commission of the town of Plimpton. That schedules roughly, we had an informal meeting with the Conservation Agent and a couple of members of this board in April where I first came in, started talking about this project. The main purpose of that meeting was I wanted to understand the main changes from the last time I permitted solar, which was 2020 in the town of Plimpton. The two main changes are this bylaw has been rewritten and on the conservation side, a wetlands, local wetlands protection bylaw has been written. Neither of those existed when I permitted and developed the previous project. So I wanted to get an understanding of the spirit behind both of those bylaws so that I could apply to this site. We submitted to the Conservation Commission in May of this year. We had a site walk with the Conservation Agent, Mr. Brian Bossa, late in May, and then we opened the hearing in early June. We had a site walk with the entire Conservation Commission in mid-June, which included a walk from the whole property as well as visiting Mayflower Cranberries property as well to discuss some stormwater issues that they had been seeing on the site just south of this access road right in between Phase One and Phase Two. After that, we had our second meeting with Conservation Commission on the 1st of July where we resolved an issue at the north of the site that was really the main focal point, called the main contention point with this project. There's a vernal pool up in this wooded area that we wanted to make sure that we stayed clear of and our design respected properly. So the board unanimously granted the approval for the work just within the vernal pool boundary area. So that was the main thing with Conservation Commission. We have received our peer review letter from ConsCom. I imagine this board's got a copy. The project was very well received. There was a couple of small comments. We've talked with the peer reviewer for ConsCom and we've incorporated those comments. Our next meeting with ConsCom is not until beginning of August, but certainly with this board, you recall, I was in front of you in the beginning of June, asked a couple administrative questions, application fees, et cetera, et cetera. I was back in front of you on the 17th of June, formally delivering the application package, which included the binder in front of you, a very thick stormwater control report, as well as a copy of the plan set, which is on the back here, I see rolled up on the desk. We discussed obviously setting this date for the public hearing, and we green-lighted the peer review with Mr. John Chesia on behalf of this board. On the 11th of July, I met on-site with John, and we walked the site for about two and a half, three hours, just going over the plans, going over the site to kind of aid him in his review, and I anticipate getting his letter in the next couple of weeks. So beyond this intro, certainly here to discuss any comments from the board or from the public as we await formal peer review report from Mr. Chesia's office. Administratively, I'll close out just handing over a hard copy of the itemized waiver request, which was the one item that was missing from my application package. It was delivered electronically in June, which is to formally update the Quisco file. We deliver that to you guys now, and give you guys two copies if that would help. And I'll leave it there. Happy to take any questions to the board.
So yes, so John has been reviewing the application. He's not completed his review yet, so we don't have our consulting engineer's comments back. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant before we open it up to public questions?
Did John have some questions about the tree farm at one point or something?
So one of our members is not currently present. He wasn't able to attend the meeting. We have adopted the Mullins Rule. He will review all the materials so that he will be coming up to speed, but he did have questions about the Christmas tree farm, and what he wanted to do was schedule a site walk with all of the board, which would be posted as a public meeting because that would be a quorum, would be present, and he asked...
Was this part of the trees that had to be cleared, right?
I think, I can't speak for exactly what his question was because I don't remember, and he didn't send it to me in an email.
No, that was a concern.
But I know he wanted to physically see, he wanted to physically see the property. Oh, he said his Saturdays in August are relatively open. So would a Saturday work? I mean, we...
At the voice line, whatever works.
Okay. Does anyone have a preference for a Saturday?
The 9th of the 16th, I'm out.
We will set it for the 23rd then.
When?
The 23rd. That's the one after the 9th and the 16th. If that works for you, please let me know if that does not work. I will not be present, but that does not matter.
August 23rd?
Yes. Okay. So hold on one second. What time should we make it?
10:00 AM?
Would 10:00 AM be acceptable? And obviously, if something happens and that doesn't work, please let me know and we can re-coordinate that.
Obviously, held three or four site walks so far on this property. I'll send you an email ultimately with just a map of showing how to access the site, but ultimately, we'll drive in through Plimpton Sand and Gravel around the sites, all the way around and in, and there's a community parking area right here. So I can send that via email so that you can forward it out, just so everyone knows exactly how to get there. Obviously, Plimpton Sand and Gravel is an active property, so we'll want to drive it.
And since there will be a quorum of the board, it will be posted as a public meeting. Somebody will have to take notes so that there's minutes of it. Did anybody else on the board have any questions about the project so far?
Can I ask questions?
You can ask questions, yes.
So the Kingston substation is full for any more solar in the area?
Brook Street substation.
Brook Street.
Yeah. Kingston substation's a separate substation about three miles north of the Brook Street substation, if you just continue to follow this right-of-way up that way.
So I was wondering, as the demand for, you know, electricity increases, which it usually does, are they going to reconfigure that substation to accept more solar?
If they did, it would cost material, material amounts of money, more than a solar project like the distributed generation projects that are dotted across southeast Mass could afford. To rebuild the substation is on the order of $100 million. It's a lot. So there's some work that's happened over the years to reinforce this substation, et cetera, but when you only have so much land, transformers are only so big, those transformers have a nameplate, right? That nameplate, I think there are two 50, five, zero MVA transformers at this site. Eversource operating protocols require certain safety factors, et cetera, and they use what's called an N minus one contingency plan. So one of the transformers is always held in backup in case the other goes down so that they can simply switch loaded generation to the other one. So that means working capacity for that substation is some percentage of 50. It's about 90% of 50, so call it 45 megawatts total. And so when you add up certainly the solar here, you guys know what other solar in the Plimpton area that runs back, we're approaching 50 megawatts, 45 megawatts total, and that'll be the effective electrical capacity of that substation. That substation's a little bit like an electrical octopus. The feeders that run spread all through Plimpton, the solar projects all through Plimpton connect to those feeders, all the power is used locally, and anything in excess runs back up through that substation to transmission and gets distributed throughout the Commonwealth. So we've reached an effective capacity of solar here in Plimpton.
Good to know. Thank you.
Okay. So before we open it up to the public, I will note that we did receive a response back from the Board of Health. They said they had no comments on the application, and we received a written response today from the Fire Department. The Fire Department captain has requested enforcement of 527 CMR Chapter 11, Building Services, Section 11.12.4.1 Clearances. Specifically, a clear area of 10 feet around ground-mounted photovoltaic installations shall be provided. He notes this clearance is essential to ensure safe access for fire personnel in the event of an emergency and to allow for effective fire suppression operations. We request that this requirement be incorporated into the project plans and enforced as part of the site plan approval process. And while I don't have a copy of this, if you want to take a photograph of it, that we can do.
I have to refer back to that reference to make sure, but as you read, it implies the setback areas around it from our fence is a typical 15-foot setback from the fence to be raised. So I believe we need that, but I'll take a photo of it, and I'll have you respond that
Okay. So is there anyone from the public that would like to ask any questions? Yes, ma'am. Could you please state your name for the record and your address?
Kim LaFleur, reside at 72 Brook Street, but also with my husband Jeff, we own and operate Mayflower Cranberries, which has parcels directly abutting this at Zero Brook Street as well as 54 on Brook Street. Essentially, I have more statements versus questions at this point, statements for the board could consider. And first, I'd like to preface it with, I am not anti-solar, and my husband and I are trying to be good neighbors. This is a significantly large project that directly abuts our bogs that you can see in the maps that you've been providing. Also on the property, but that hasn't been stated, is a significant amount of unpermitted gravel removal that's taken place across all three parcels, and that's been ongoing. I did a public records request a year ago to just make sure that we didn't miss any letters that came in, and I did in fact find that there has been no permits issued for gravel removal. My best estimate, I am not an engineer, I'm also not anti-ground, my husband and I did a project on our own property, but my best estimate, knowing what we removed and what the acreage is on this site and what it was, we're talking hundreds of thousands of yards of material have been removed from this site with no, you can wa, it's a cliff from the edge of our property or from where they cleared up to. The second part that I'd like to bring up is the bylaw that was put in place in town regarding deforestation and the pause between deforestation and a solar project. With my own eyes, I've witnessed a feller buncher in on that site. Yes, it has been a Christmas tree farm, but as was indicated earlier, there were parts of it that it weren't Christmas trees, it was a forest. That has been cleared and the gravel removed, stripped down to, if you look at the topo maps, again, I'm not an engineer, but the old contours previous to this project, go and look at the proposed project, you've got contours in the 70-foot range, it's gone. Gone. I would urge you when you do your site visit to take a look at that. I participated in the Conservation Commission's hearing for the purpose of the stormwater management control structure, which is inadequate, and we've discussed that. In times of not just significant rain, but a decent rainfall, the stormwater management area is insignificant, insufficient, and it will flood onto our property. And so that's what we had asked that be considered. Where Cranberry Garblers, we're raising a food crop. When we've got water flooding into that string of bogs, what you see off to the left of the project, that little triangle, that's our reservoir, that's our main water source for the entire farm, which feeds the water. It's not just that string of bogs, it's not the string that you see there. We also have an additional 10 acres across the street on Brook Street, and that is our main water source. You know, I've been asked, well, can you see the project? You know, will it bother you? You know, can you see it? I can see a clearing in the trees, significant clearing in the trees from my house. Can I see the project? I can from the bogs, from my house, no. But it's really just the issue of making sure that if this project is approved, that our rights as property owners are protected and that we're not subjected to the flooding that has been continuing to happen on our property now with just even more space cleared. And as was referenced, it is a hard, hard-packed road, so when the water hits, it just runs, and right now it's running onto our property. So I question the deforestation that's happened. I question the lack of a gravel removal permit, which I was assured was going to take place even retroactively, but they're just basically, this project has been going on and expanding with, other than the planning board's stamp of approval. I was informed last summer that, well, how are we supposed to know the gravel was taken out? Like, well, look at your topo maps, it's right there. You know, the applicant hasn't hidden that information, other than they haven't applied for a permit. So just making sure that those issues are addressed and that, as in the butter, that we're not impacted by any further expansion of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions for Mrs. LaFleur? Well, those are valid points, and we should definitely look into them. Do you have anything you want to say in response to those comments?
Yeah, I think those issues are not unknown to us. We knew them going in, for I as the solar applicant. I think the gravel permit would be a discussion with the landlord that I'm happy to facilitate and understand what's happened, what did or didn't happen, but as a solar developer, we're not harvesting gravel, right? We're not selling gravel, we're installing and building a solar project. It's my job to come in and grade this site out, clean it up such that a project can exist on the surface that we make. So we're dealing with the existing conditions right now, but recognize that those existing conditions have changed a lot over the last 50 years the neighbors owned it, but certainly over the last 10 years since solar was introduced in the area. So we're generally aware of it, which, you know, makes my job a lot harder because the amount of grading that we have to introduce on this site, you'll see from the grading plans, to get it to a state that we can build on is considerably more than a typical solar project. So definitely aware of that. Deforestation, generally speaking, yes, there's been trees cleared on the site, like I went over at the very outset, the conditions in these 100 acres have changed a lot. Going back to my notes, before solar was introduced here, there are about 40 acres, four, zero, of completely undeveloped untouched woodland, and those first two projects ate up a material amount of that. Obviously, some of the Christmas tree farm has been let grow back wild, which has added some forest land back, but all told, from pre-solar, call it 2000, what was the date? 2010-ish to now, instead of 40 acres of undeveloped, we're at 26 right now as I count it. So yes, recognizing that, but also recognizing that the current project being proposed is entirely within the footprint of the traditional Christmas tree farm. So the trees that are being cleared, there's a very small stand here, very small stand, this is all Christmas trees that have overgrown, and then as we clean up this graded area, this cliff as it's been described, we're going to have to grade it out and clean it up so that there's no material erosion. We're going to lose some trees along the very edge. It totals approximately two acres at most of Christmas trees that have overgrown. There's some larger trees down here, which is about... This area along the southern edge is less than three quarters of an acre. So we've really tried to limit, call it the natural tree clearing, but that's why I started with this kind of orange overlay is the traditional Christmas tree area, kind of shown on this map. This project, I don't think tree clearing is a discussion about it. Finally, stormwater, you know, we permit these projects, Phase One, really the Norrie project, Phase One and Phase Two, we go through all the stormwater requirements of the town, we put together a plan, we put together a report, it's reviewed by peer a plan, we put together a report, it's reviewed by peer review engineer, we've done the same thing with this project. But sometimes on the ground, things operate a little bit differently than they do in reality. In addition, stormwater standards are only increasing, and I think we know from kind of weather changes, we're getting 10-year storms every year. So there's a lot more frequent high-rain events. So what we're trying to do with this project, especially along this access road here to the south, which is really the main kind of abutting source or main water source to these Mayflower Cranberry bogs here, we've identified this specific area right here as a low point, which is immediately opposite the retention basin. You can't really see it, if you look at your sheets, you'll be able to see it, but there's an infiltration basin right here that's immediately between Phases One and Phases Two. That was designed for a reason. From discussions and visits onsite, the communication to us and to the other board has been, this stormwater feature is not adequate, it's not performing as it was supposed to. So with our design, we're proposing additional stormwater features along the southern side of this access road, hoping that we can remedy issues from the existing projects. I think I'm trying not to get into a contest with this board over, well, that's not my problem anymore, that's somebody else's project now. I'm trying, because we're gonna be out there doing development, I think we can really overbuild the stormwater for Phase Three, especially along the access road, to try to rectify some of the issues that Mrs. LaFleur is seeing in the field. And I'm more than willing to do that, and I recommend the board focuses Mr. Chesia's review on the functionality of this existing basin as well as our additional improvements that we propose.
So are those improvements included in this project, or are those things that came as a result of the discussion that you had with the Conservation Commission about stormwater that happened after the application was created?
I'd say, oh, we ran our stormwater report and then the site walk and the application and all that, our site walk happened a little bit later. We've committed to the Conservation Commission to make those improvements, but knowing that the Conservation Commission is not the controller of stormwater, this board is. We, you know, that's why I called that out, I pointed it out with John Chesia, and I want to get his feedback on our current design and then hopefully work with him on making sure that the improvements, the additional improvements, the overbuilding is the word I'd use, are adequate and appropriate. Gravel, trees, stormwater. Those are the three, three main issues that we've been focused on respectfully. I don't think trees is part of this conversation. The tree clearing limits that are in today's bylaw did not exist for the previous projects. They exist now, there's a reason why I'm not proposing it on, you know, when a landlord reaches out to me with a tree property in Plimpton, you know, we understand that that's what the bylaws asking, the 10% removal rate allows me basically an acre and a half, if you look at the fence line, it allows me about two acres if you look at the total development area. At, at worst, we're below two acres on this property here, so I think we're in compliance. But totally recognize the importance of stormwater, stormwater controls on all these projects. That's where we're gonna continue to focus with this board, Mr. Chesia.
I mean, I think, I think these are all points that we'll really need to take a close look at.
And I would only offer that on the tree clearing, it has taken place in phases, just like the project. So before any gravel started a couple of years ago now, that's when the heavy equipment came in, and we're like, oh, here we go again. Then the gravel started, and gravel was continuing into last year. So the tree, heavy tree removal, again, feller buncher, where you're taking down big stuff, that was in there two years ago. At least up on that, on that corner. I can, I can hear it from my house, which is about little over a half, you know, that's across the reservoir, basically. We've got a direct line of sight here across the reservoir.
Okay. Does, does anybody have any follow-up questions on those points?
Do a site visit.
Mm-hmm. Right. Yeah. The, the site visit will be particularly helpful to understand geographically where everything is. I, I will say that, you know, we, we recently had a site plan review for not a solar project, but a project where there were significant issues with stormwater runoff because the project commenced and the stormwater infrastructure was not installed early on. So the design that was intended to prevent there being runoff onto the abutting property wasn't one of the first things that was installed, and therefore, there were a lot of issues and problems and complaints. So just, so you know, there may very well be a condition in here that will require before, you know, you go full bore on the installation of the project to actually do the stormwater mitigation in order to address potential problems for the abutters early on as opposed to waiting.
Yeah. It's totally reasonable. I've been developing solar for 15 years in Massachusetts, and different focal points pop up at different times. Right now, it's, it's all about stormwater. We see scenarios where there's improper phasing of construction, the issues especially come from improper start dates, right? Especially with a forest in sight. Site's cleared in the winter, it snows, it freezes, it rains, and all that water starts running out. So we're totally sensitive to that and I think we want to do a little construction
Okay. So we will not be closing this, we will be continuing this, and hopefully, we will have the review comments from John Chesia before the next meeting that it's continued to. But let's look at the calendar here. So we, we would be meeting the 5th of August slash the 19th of August. Typically, we only have one meeting during the month of August in order to give the board a slight break. It is currently the 15th, so I would imagine John would have his comments by the 5th. If you guys want to do the 5th and skip the 19th. I, it's the, I'm fine with either date, it is the pleasure of the board.
If the board would authorize my group to interact with John, say the, the letter comes, we can respond and he can get another letter, I think the 19th would be great. But if the board would like any discussion to happen at the meeting before we revise plans, then we could do the 5th. But generally speaking, just because there's not a planner, et cetera, I'd love the opportunity just to go back and forth with John to get that letter as mature as we can or get multiple iterations of that letter before they move back.
Well, typically, for the initial review, we don't operate that way, but for subsequent, once it's down to less, you know, just a few issues, we, we will do that. But for the first review, John will come personally and the members of the public are invited again, and he will make his presentation, and, and people like Mrs. LaFleur can ask him questions directly so that, that's usually the first meeting. So should we do the 5th then? The 5th? Yes.
I guess so.
Okay. So.
On the 9th.
Say, the applicant would like to continue, unless you'd like to close now. So we will continue to August 5th at 6:30 PM. I move to continue the public hearing in this application to August 5th at 6:30. Is there a second?
Second.
Hold on a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimously with one recusal. Okay. So we will see you back on the 5th of August at 6:30. And if you want to take a picture of this before you go, see, we don't have a zillax machine, so that's probably easiest way. Okay.
Were we expecting comments from the police or any other boards?
They were all provided with the materials, they have not responded. Sometimes they don't if they don't have any comments. Those are the only two that we've gotten back. Board of Health with no comments.
Just a no comment.
Yeah. No comments from the Board of Health. Thank you. We have no new business, we have no mail.
Fantastic.
The only thing we have is the minutes, to vote the minutes for the July 1st meeting. Did everybody have an opportunity to look at those minutes?
Yep.
Okay. So I move that we approve the July 5th, 2020, I'm sorry, July 1st, 2025 meeting minutes as written. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then it's unanimous. And then I move to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So this meeting is adjourned at 7:12.